Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have six members present. We have five members in the boardroom and Dr. Hairston is on the line. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Go move.
Second.
Mr. Figurs has moved. Mr. McGuffey is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the August 31st, 2023 special board meeting minutes, the September 19th, 2023 regular board meeting minutes, and the September 28th, 2023 special board meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. McGuffey has moved. Mrs. Thompson is second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. We'll begin, as we typically do, with our video highlights from the instructional television team.
JPS achieved an impressive C accountability rating of 598 in the Mississippi Accountability Results, coming just one point shy of attaining a B grade. This marks an outstanding increase of 29 points, with a total of 23 schools increasing at least one letter grade. The State Board of Education officially endorsed these accountability grades during their meeting on September 28th. These ratings are based on the Mississippi Academic Assessment Program, which evaluates proficiency and growth in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and U.S. History, along with other performance measures. In the 2022-23 academic year, assessments were administered to scholars in grades three through eight, as well as high school students. Congratulations on a job well done to all our educators and scholars.
Here's somebody, a newer teacher, who was desperate enough to say, "I need something different. It's not working."
It was moving night at the Jackson Convention Center.
Train the brain to be able to get all of these skills working together for a child to become a proficient reader.
JPS scholars and families watched a documentary called "The Right to Read." A powerful civil rights film shined a bright spotlight on literacy in the classroom.
Because of these gaps between white kids and black kids, white kids and Hispanic kids, not in some areas, but in all areas, how are you meeting the needs of all children?
JPS Superintendent Dr. Eric L. Green, panel members, and community members met to discuss literacy in JPS schools.
At the state level, that's one thing that we have really tried to focus hard on is providing our teachers with the knowledge because they aren't getting it in their education programs.
We've got to cash back those three thousand and reading levels. You can literally see today that we have more proficient readers than we had before.
And today, we're going to be singing some songs and eating good and having just overall good time.
Bienvenidos a la escuela, a Johnson Middle School.
Well, the Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrating our heritage this month.
Live, live music. Great food, and a wonderful opportunity for fellowship, as JPS teachers, scholars, and parents gathered to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month.
We look at all of the accomplishments and all of the contributions that Hispanic Americans have made.
For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Instagram at JPS Doodle Voices, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
Thank you, as always, to our team members. Appreciate your work in providing those highlights for our board meeting. Board members, every October, we take the time to celebrate some of our amazing heroes in education. The National Principals Month shines a spotlight on the transformative power of school principals. And throughout the month, we try to celebrate our principals' vital roles in inspiring excellence in our schools, among our teachers, our staff members, scholars, parents, our partners, and the broader community. Folks, we have amazing school leaders, and I mean amazing school leaders. So please join me as we celebrate our exceptional principals this month. And I believe we have several of them in the building. We have some of our school principals. Well, I thought we had a few. Thought I saw some faces. I don't know my principals. Okay. There you have it. All right. So there are none in the building. But we're celebrating them even in abstention. All right. And speaking of celebrating, as you heard and as you now know, Jackson Public Schools has improved our performance on the accountability model, the state's accountability model, for the second consecutive year. If you hadn't heard, we actually scored 598 points on the accountability model, which is a 29-point increase from the last time we, from the 21-22 school year, and exactly one point, one measly point, from the B rating. I think that deserves a little bit of applause. I've shared with some of you already, I've gone through my mourning process, so I'm good now, mourning that B rating, but, you know, we're right there at the cusp. I want to invite Dr. Cormac, our Deputy Superintendent, to join us and provide just a little more of our, of the details regarding our continued progress. Dr. Cormac.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board trustees, Dr. Green, JPS community. We're excited to continue the celebration of our improved academic performance in the district, as this bar graph displays. Some tremendous progress has been made, and it has been already pointed out. If you look at our letter grading system, just one point shy. I know that we will continue to get there with this great team of ours. But excited to celebrate our schools who have achieved a successful rating or above. Did you know that 76% of our JPS schools have attained a C or better rating? That is a pretty impressive feat. And we are excited to celebrate the fact that a plurality, 16 of our schools are rated A, so more in the A category than any other category. We're excited to celebrate that as well. I want to call each of the schools, but as you'll note, there are some schools noted in green, and each of the schools represented here in green are new additions to our list of A-rated schools, so we're really excited to celebrate them as well. Our schools obtaining an A rating include Barack Obama IV Elementary, Casey Elementary, Claesel Elementary, Galloway Elementary, Green Elementary, John Hopkins Elementary, Key Elementary, Lake Elementary, McWillie Elementary, North Jackson Elementary, Raines Elementary, Shirley Elementary, Span Elementary, Wells A-PAC Elementary, Bailey A-PAC Middle School, and Northwest Middle School. Please join me giving a round of applause to all 16 of our A-rated schools. We're also excited to have a number of B-rated schools, 12 who've made the list, again in green. These are new additions to our B-rated schools, and we're very excited to have a number of new additions to this mix. These include Boyd Elementary, Johnson Elementary, Isabel Elementary, Pecan Park Elementary, Timberline Elementary, Van Winkle Elementary, Walton Elementary, Wilkins Elementary, Callaway High School, Forest Hill High School, Jim Hill High School, and Murrah High School. Let's give a round of applause. And you heard those high schools in the mix, so that gives us special, special pride. There's been great transformative work across our divisions, but most especially there. We're excited about it. Our C-rated schools, there are some new additions, some climbers among the list, and we want to celebrate their accomplishments here. We have seven C-rated schools, inclusive of Baker Elementary, Oak Forest Elementary, Smith Elementary, Sykes Elementary, Walton Elementary, Lanier High School, and Wingfield High School. Let's give them a round of applause as well. We want to celebrate some schools, which we call our Pot of Gold Schools. These are schools who have maintained, or both achieved an A rating and maintained an A rating, and there is a new addition to this list as well. So these schools that are on the list in black represent schools that have maintained an A rating over multiple years. As you might know, attaining an A rating is an accomplishment, but maintaining it year after year with different cohorts of scholars, staff changes, is an incredible feat of leadership, and we want to recognize these schools who have both achieved the A rating and maintained it. Those include Barack Obama Elementary School, Casey Elementary School, John Hopkins Elementary School, Key Elementary School. Lester is, will be shifted from this list, Wells A-PAC, Bailey A-PAC, and Northwest IV School. Let's give them a big round as well. And then we have some schools who we call and classify as our Mountain Movers. These are schools that have moved one or more accountability ratings. We're really impressed with this list. We include on this list schools that have moved one, two, and three letter ratings that are pretty extraordinary. So on this list, having moved two letter ratings from a D rating to a B rating, Boyd Elementary School, Claesel Elementary School, two moves, Galloway Elementary School, Isabel Elementary School, Lake Elementary School, North Jackson, which moved from a C rating to an A rating this year. We're incredibly proud. Oak Forest Elementary School, Raines Elementary School, which moved from a D rating to an A rating. Exceptional work at Raines. Walton Elementary School, Green Elementary School, which moved from a D rating to an A rating. Tremendous work there. Johnson Elementary School, Wilkins Elementary School, Marshall Elementary, Shirley Elementary, Span Elementary, Sykes Elementary, Van Winkle Elementary, Forest Hill High School, Jim Hill High School, Lanier High School, Murrah High School, Provine High School, and Wingfield High School. Let's give a round of applause to all of our movers and shakers. Extraordinary, extraordinary, extraordinary work. I want to contextualize the work. We are delivering on our strategic commitments. So you remember this image from our Strategic Plan Excellence for All, launched just over four years ago in July of 2019, and oh, what a world it has been for us. But we're excited to celebrate this year in particular because proficiency has increased in all tested areas, from English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and U.S. History from the previous year's administration. So you'll see that we saw a 7.1% increase in reading proficiency, an impressive 8.1, I'm sorry, 8.4 uptick in math proficiency, a notable 6.8 boost in science proficiency, and a commendable 7.8% rise in history proficiency. Of note, in our strategic plan, we lifted the commitment to score at least 40% proficient or advanced in Language Arts and Mathematics across grade levels and subjects. So should we continue this track where we are on track to also achieve and attain those strategic plan goals? So we, we've not sat on our laurels or rested on our laurels, but continue to ground the continued work in our strategic plan commitments. And excitingly, we have exceeded our Algebra I proficiency goal. When we started our strategic plan, just 10.7% of our high school scholars were proficient or advanced in Algebra I. Our goal was to triple that percentage to just about 30%, and based on this last proficiency data, we're excited to celebrate 45% of our high school scholars proficient or advanced in Algebra I, smashing our strategic plan goal, which we believed to be ambitious at the start of the plan. We've also exceeded our graduation rate goal of 80% for the end of this five-year plan, and our current graduation rate, a lagging graduation rate, 84.1%. So we're very excited to celebrate continued increases in graduation outcomes.
Very good.
All of this, we celebrate the work of our scholars, our teachers, our principals, who Dr. Green has recognized, and then the captains of our great academic leadership team from Division One with Dr. Kathleen Grisby, Division Two Elementary with Mrs. Dion Woody, the work of the middle school division led by Dr. Chanello Evans, and the work of our high school division captained by Lakisha Marshall-Thomas. We're incredibly just gifted to have such exceptional leaders helming this work of our, leading our principals and leading our schools. And so with that, we want to celebrate just all of the continued hard work and dedication work, as Dr. Green would often say, both not only the hard work, but the heart work of leading and transforming education outcomes here at Jackson Public Schools.
Amen. I'd ask Dr. Cormac to just come and give some of the highlights on our performance. You know, we're really clear that we've not reached where we want to be ultimately. I don't know that we'll ever get there, because even when we reach when we reach our A rating and when we meet our academic, our strategic plan goals, and when we get to 90 and above in graduation rates and our numbers rival that across the state, when we reach those, we'll just set new goals. We'll just set new goals and keep climbing higher and higher. I will say, I'm super, super proud of this team and what we've accomplished already. And when I look in the eyes of our academic leadership and leadership across the district, when I look in the eyes of our principals and our teachers and others on Team JPS, I see that, would somebody say that, that fight, that dog in their eyes that is determined to reach even higher heights. And so in spite of all the challenges we've had in the world, let alone here in our space, this team has persevered, and the team has shifted, some have left, some have joined us, and the work continues. And so I want to say publicly to our team and publicly to you, Dr. Cormac, just appreciate the leadership, and I thank you for your leadership. And, and, inside joke. And just appreciate all that Team JPS has done to serve our children and families. Kudos to the entire team.
Thank you, Doc. All right.
And with that, Dr. Sevak, unless there are any questions or feedback for me, I turn it back over to you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, any comments or reactions, reflections?
I am just overjoyed and elated, and I just personally say congratulations to Team JPS. So excited and so proud to be named among this outstanding team. I do, I really do. You all have done amazing.
I want to add to what Cynthia said, I think. Dr. Cormac, you said, "Should we continue?" I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget it.
Get him.
Should we continue? There is no "should we continue." There is a "we will continue."
Get him.
That's how we want you to think about this great accomplishment that has been made, and kudos to each one of you, because I know it's a lot of hard work, and we just really appreciate the work of this great team.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I want to go back and just add, I just remember sitting here, what, last year, and remembering, well, actually celebrating that moment.
Yes.
But even in celebrating that moment, just knowing that we were going to excel even higher. You know what I'm saying? And now we're here, you know, and so I already know, you know, we're moving even further up, and we will have our A, you know, this time next year. We will be an A-rated school district, and it's going to turn the entire city around. I am so excited about it that even just this past Saturday, I'm at a community event, we're talking about the zoo and whatever, whatever, but all I can think of is, because we got great schools, we'll have a great zoo, we'll have a great city. You understand what I'm saying? We're going to have great everything because we have great schools, and people will come back to this capital city because of the work that you guys are doing here, the foundation that is being laid here in hard work, integrity, and just educating our students and propel, and they're going to want to come back to their city. They're going to want to stay in our city because of the work that you all are doing and the pride that you are instilling in them that they could do. You believed in them, and we believed in you. We all believed in each other, Team JPS, and we done it. So congratulations.
I only have one thing to add, which is, just to echo everything these two women have said, phenomenal job, and Sarah Harper would throw a rock at me if I didn't note that they were an A in '22, and this year as well. You should have been on your list. Uh-oh. She could have thrown a rock at me if I didn't say it. So. Okay. Mr. Figurs.
Got him.
Got him.
So I just want to echo comments of an old African preacher once said to Dr. Green and the administrative staff, the educators, the scholars, the parents, and the community. It does not yet appear what we shall be.
Thank you, Mr. Figurs. We receive that. We receive that.
I'm pleased that he mentioned the parents, because, you know, I sat here thinking, nothing would be accomplished without the tremendous support of the parents. So we want...
It's an impressive thing that they're doing, and there's a lot of enthusiasm from the community.
Amen, you children, amen. You're welcome.
All right. It's tough to follow that. I'll just say this, I'm very lucky, privileged, just do a lot of work nationally at Hope Credit Union, and by extension, on boards of trade associations and on boards of nonprofits locally. And I use the strategic plan, anytime we go into a strategic planning session, I use the JPS strategic plan and say, "This is how we need to do it." Not only because it's concise, there's measures that are easy to understand, but because it worked. And it worked because of the work of thousands of people in this district, and there are leaders in this room, there are leaders in our schools, there are leaders in our communities that just got behind it. And so that intentional thought, the fidelity to it, I just want to share that because it's that level of excellence that we talk about, that we name, that I've seen it over and over again, and I've used it as a model for others. And so, thank you, Dr. Green, for pushing us, thank you for pushing this board, thank you all for pushing this board. And again, know that we'll continue to do the same. So, all right. Well, let's move on. We're now to the public comment section of the meeting. I don't believe we have any public comments, so let me just reiterate that board members are very interested in comments from the community. Anyone who would like to make public comments before the board should email their requests to miss rosalynwilliams@roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 p.m. on the date of the meeting. All right. We will move now to the information-only section, part of our agenda. We have a lot to talk about tonight, so Dr. Green, we'll move the conversation back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. This is a conversation that's been building over time, and so as pleased as I am to finally be engaged, engaging in this conversation publicly, it's also a tough conversation to have, and one that brings me a little bit of angst because I do not want the progress that we've made thus far to be lost first. You know, we should continue to celebrate what we've done and what we've accomplished. But in addition, as we think about change and managing and leading through change, there's absolutely the opportunity, the chance, that that change could cause us to stumble. And so even as we present this plan and talk through what we know or what we fought through thus far, I do want you to know that we're mindful of the need to steward our district through any change that comes about, such that we don't lose any ground, but only make make ground. And so with that, board members, I am coming to you this evening with a draft optimization plan. And I say that because this, this plan, although very much so informed by data that we've had over years, that we've compiled and reviewed and analyzed over years, and certainly looking at where we are today, it is, it is one that we know will require considerable engagement and discussion, investigation, to determine if it's, if it's exactly as it needs to be. And so we know that going in. But I do, and do want to and will, present to you this draft plan. And as always, we want to start with our core values and lift up a few of the core values that we believe are most, this is not, oh, maybe I should turn it on. A few of the core values that we believe are underscored in this, in this work. And those being excellence in our drive towards excellence and our eye towards excellence, excellence in our work, supporting our young people in reaching excellence, and that's excellence across the board, not just in the classroom, but across our district. Excuse me, this continued push and drive towards equity and understanding that this means that all means all. Every one of our scholars demands, requires, and is owed optimal learning experiences and environments, and the very best that the adults around them have to offer. And as well, positive and respectful culture, not the least of which involved in that is ensuring that our learning environments and that our structures lend themselves toward spaces and opportunities and experiences that demonstrate the level of respect and what we want for our scholars. Why is a district optimization or rightsizing necessary? And we typically use the term optimization because we do believe that our job is to optimize, excuse me, optimize opportunities and to optimize the resources that we have for educating our scholars and serving families. And so that's something that, that's the language that we would like to lift up. But why is it necessary? In a nutshell, as I believe everyone here knows, our school districts are funded per pupil, and many of the, most of the fixed costs in our school sites, and even across the district itself, but especially in our school sites, to include utilities, staffing, materials, facilities, maintenance, all of that. to include utilities, staffing, materials, facilities, maintenance, all of that, um, those are shared across the student populations at each of those schools. And therefore, when you have less students in a school, you spend more per student in that school. All right? And so this optimization or rightsizing is a way of ensuring that we have the optimal resourcing. Classrooms, teachers, uh, technology, restrooms, HVAC, all the things that we, in many places, don't even blink or think about, um, because they're right there and, and as they should be. But just making sure that we have that in each of our schools, um, by maintaining appropriate and reasonable enrollment levels in order to provide for those. So when I think about, um, and as I'm, uh, I've been kind of pondering and preparing for these conversations around optimization, um, wanted to clearly articulate our rationale for optimizing. One, as we've described and discussed, I believe, many times previously, we continue to see a decline in our enrollment. Um, and in several years, it's been to the tune of 1,000-plus scholars each year. So we've con- continued to see declining enrollment. We also know that we, as, as we've seen, we've discussed, we've, um, had many, um, uh, board items, agenda items here before this board, uh, asking for your support as we've, uh, needed to make significant investments in our buildings. Significant across many of our buildings. And that's even including some of our newer buildings where HVAC systems have started to fail us or, uh, some of the other issues that we've seen. And so, uh, unfortunately, this continues to be a part of our reality where we've got to make significant investments in buildings. And at some point, you run out of money. And so you've got to start prioritizing. And you've gotta think about where, um, where is that money best spent in which of our facilities? And obviously thinking about where you can serve most of your scholars, uh, the best. Also stabilizing staff. And I'll spend a minute on this, um, because I've got some updated numbers for you. Right now, board members, we're carrying about 465 vacancies across the district. 465 across all aspects of our district. 178 of them are classified individuals and 259, I'm sorry, 178 are certified individuals and 259 are classed, classified. The total number of teachers that we have, or teacher units that we have for the school year is 1,619. Those, that's those who are on the teacher pay scale. So that would include librarians and even counselors and, and other folks, um, uh, interventionists and, and all of those people. But of those, 468 are new and novice. And I wanna be real clear because I don't ever want to be misconstrued in the point that I'm making here. Everybody starts their career somewhere at some point. We were all first-year teachers, first-year principals, first-year, whatever our roles might be at some point. So that's not, th- that in and of itself is not an issue. But the reality is because of our turnover, we will continue to have such a large number of new and novice teen members, um, to staff across our current footprint, the number of schools and classrooms that we're operating from. And it's just a challenge. And we're seeing nationally fewer people going into education, coming through our schools of education. And so, um, there's a strain there. And those new and novice teachers, 109 are in their first year. 137 are in their, um, uh, second year. And so they have one year of experience. 122 are in their, um, their third year and, and three, I'm sorry, 100 of them with three years experience. So they're in the first couple of months of their, their fourth year. On emergency licenses, we have 185 teachers. Now, some of them have added endorsements and that's about 105. But that means 80 of them are special non-renewable licenses and likely new teachers. And so I lift the, these numbers up because this issue of stabilizing our staffing is very real to us. With fewer people going into the field of education or getting licensed, uh, to be teachers, um, we're competing across the board with other districts, um, let alone other fields of, of work and industries. You know, anytime you have teachers or even school leaders going to, uh, retail or, or some of the other industries, um, because they can get competitive pay or, or better pay, you know, you've got some issues there. And so this stabilizing, stabilization of our staffing is very real. And as we look at the number of scholars that we serve and the number of spaces, classrooms, that continue to spread our staff out, um, we've gotta rethink that and position ourselves better to have, um, to have to rely on fewer of these emergency licenses and to, um, better pay our folks and support them so that they can stay longer and, and help us to build up the level of, um, uh, uh, capacity and experience in our schools. The other thing that I'll lift up is, um, just an opportunity to bolster and innovate across school programs. And we're not prepared tonight to talk about specific programs, but there's been conversation about immersion, um, programs where we offer to our scholars some immersion programs and, and, um, help them to start to learn and develop proficiency in foreign languages. We talk about global citizenship. What better way to support our young people in living and operating and competing globally than to have additional languages, um, at the ready? Uh, and there, and there are other programs that we're currently running that we want to better invest in. Of course, our IB program, of course, our APAC program. Uh, but there are others in, in our CDC, um, our Career Development Center that we wanna continue to build out and, and better tie to the emerging, uh, industries and, and, um, workforce needs that, uh, as we're understanding them. There's also this need for increased competitiveness. Now, you know, y'all have gotten to know me over the last several years. Um, I'm a little competitive. I'll admit that publicly. And I certainly want to put us in a better position for our scholars to, for iron to sharpen iron. Academically, athletically, artistically. And as we rethink our feeder patterns and, and, and how we position our high schools, our, our middle and high schools, there's an opportunity for our programs to be more competitive and to provide for even greater, um, opportunities to show up and really, really dominate across the board. Um, and there's no reason why Jackson Public Schools and the city of Jackson shouldn't be dominating across the board. Uh, one of the things that I believe we've lifted up previously, but I wanna underscore here, as schools get smaller, the enrollment in individual schools declines, the, um, the amount of title funds in that school declines. And oftentimes, school leaders and, and the, um, the decision-making bodies or leadership teams at schools will determine that they wanna utilize some of their Title I funding, um, some of that federal funding to pay for an additional staff member, whether it's an additional, um, interventionist, um, a dean of students, um, an additional, uh, uh, tutor or set of tutors. There are any number of, of, um, options that folks might employ to support their scholars in their schools. Well, one of the things that these smaller schools are challenged with is as the title funds de- decline, they don't have as much flexibility for, um, building out the kinds of programs to wrap around the scholars that they might, uh, want or need. And so that's something that we've had. That's a very real issue that we've had. Uh, in some cases where we, as a, a broader district, have had to infuse additional funds at a school because they don't have sufficient funds, um, title funds to, to, uh, do something that they actually need to do on behalf of their scholars. And then the last thing that I'll note here is, and we've talked about this some, especially with regard to our, um, insurance, our, our, our property insurance. Um, we know that as we think about optimization and think about opportunities to operate more efficiently as a district, that we also have to reconsider our, um, reconsider our, um, the use of, of buildings and, and what we do with those buildings, we're purposing those buildings. Our carrying costs, whether it's, um, property insurance, um, maintenance of the grounds, um, securing the grounds, and that's inclusive of the people who might have to respond to any issues or threats to our buildings, on and on and on. Um, those costs are, are mounting and, and we know that. This is an area where we've got to lean in and, and, um, and make some, some really tough decisions. And that could include selling, uh, properties, leasing properties, or perhaps raising buildings. And by this, I mean, for the folks who aren't familiar with that term, um, de- demolishing those buildings. Um, and there are models and, and, um, uh, examples in other districts where they've raised those buildings and, uh, planted trees and, and created walking paths and park benches and all sorts of things. There are opportunities for us to utilize that space in other ways, not just as a building for, whether it's for a school or for another, uh, program. And so, again, uh, wanted to walk through some of these as the, some of the key rationales for, um, our recommendation that we optimize the district. And so also wanna add or, or share just a little bit of the updated data with regard to enrollment. I'll give you a moment just to let this sink in. And this is just since 2015. And, and if we go back to, you know, um, 2012 or, or what have you, we'll likely see, um, the decline, uh, even greater decline from the 30,000s at some point we were. And this is just through last year. I believe right now we're sitting, um, below 18,000 for this school year. Those numbers are still shaking out, um, some coming in, some going out. But we're sitting just below, uh, 18,000 is my understanding as to our current enrollment. It's pretty stark. And for some, these are just numbers and, and they might not mean much. But they absolutely mean to us, um, on average, 1,000 times the per pupil funding each year. Even as our payments to charters continue to increase, even as our utility costs continue to increase, even as we get smarter and, and become, um, and, and more honest with ourselves as to the cost of educating children, not the least of which is what we should act- actually paying, actually be paying our educators and others throughout the district. As, as we come to grips with that and, and make some decisions in those regards, um, our costs go up. But our scholars are declining. Something has to give. Wanted to share that these numbers now, um, m- most of this, except for the blue row, most of this information is taken from the 21-22 school year. That's the most recent, um, National Center for Education Statistics data that we could, uh, gather. Um, but the comparisons are there and we just gave some updated, um, data from, from, um, uh, 22-23 in Jackson Public Schools. Um, and the point here really is to shine a light on the, the size, the enrollment size in these other districts and the numbers of, uh, schools that they're operating. And I will say, um, although Birmingham City, uh, at the time was operating 49 schools with 21,000, um, just over 21,000 scholars, uh, as of this past year, their enrollment was down by, I believe, just 200 or so scholars. But they had closed, uh, seven of their schools. So they're currently operating 42 schools. So, so clearly this issue of optimization is not just a Jackson thing, not by any stretch. You know, it's a conversation that's happening in Chicago, in Detroit. Um, Indianapolis, I know, has gone through a bit of this. Um, uh, Oakland, California has gone through quite a bit of this more recently. So these are our national issues. And for us to think or assume that, that, you know, we can just ignore something that nationally folks are grappling with is, is foolhardy. We've shared this information before, but just wanna put this, um, before you. Um, a couple of years ago, these were actual numbers, enrollment numbers from some of our schools to highlight, um, this issue. But again, it's a, it's, the point here is that the more scholars you have in a school, the, um, more you can spread the costs, the expenses of that school across those scholars. The fewer scholars you have in that school, the more you're spending per scholar to run that school. And so, um, and that, and that's true across all of the, um, divisions. So for elementary schools, if you're operating an elementary school at 235 scholars, you'd be spending about 10,000, over $10,000 per scholar to operate that school, that elementary school. With the typical elementary schedule and typical elementary staffing model, and, and all those things can be adjusted, but the point is still there. You gotta spend more if you've got fewer scholars. At 500, um, with just over 500 scholars, you'd be spending almost half the amount in that same school, the same program, same staffing, um, or pretty much the same staffing. You can be spending far less. Um, and then you see the differences across the board. It's, it's, um, it's pretty stark, the, the, the differences that we've seen. And these aren't just, again, dummy numbers. Now, the, it's a couple of years old, this data, but these are examples from our district. And now we've got elementary schools, less than 200 scholars. Actually, a handful of elementary schools with less than 200 scholars. So. All right. So wanted to spend a little bit of time on the groundwork there and some of the rationale and some of the data. Now I wanna share with you again our proposed optimization, um, for our district. And I'll prepare you that, um, you know, I pushed the team to go hard. Because as you've seen, going back just a couple of slides, the enroll, the decline in our enrollment has not stopped. I don't know where it'll bottom, bottom out. I don't know. It has not stopped. And so there's a chance that we'll continue to see a decline. But based on where we are and what we've seen over the last several years, we thought it necessary to really challenge ourselves to, um, to do something that will, um, make a difference. And so here we are. These are the schools that we're recommending for closure and consolidation. We've got an asterisk next to Obama Elementary School, Obama Magnet and Wells APAC. Because those schools, the, the proposal is that we co-locate those elementaries with their, um, natural feeder middle schools. And so Obama with Northwest and Wells APAC with, um, Bailey. And, and to note, Wells APAC would operate, uh, still the fourth and fifth grade, added to Bailey APAC for sixth, seventh and eighth. But Obama operating from, um, uh, kindergarten on up. Okay. This is our current thinking. And you see, we've got draft all over it and, you know, wanna continue to stress that, you know, this is our current thinking. We're continuing to run traps and looking at boundaries and, and how they fit or don't and, you know, what this could mean for our busing, our transportation, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, but this is where we are today. Uh, for Callaway High School, the feeder would be Kirksey, um, Powell, a, a piece of Powell Middle School and, uh, or the, those who attend Powell. a piece of Powell Middle School, and, or those who attend Powell Middle School, and Northwest, or North Jackson Elementary School. And we'll talk about some of the changes, and what some of this means in just a moment. For Forest Hill High School, Cardoza Middle School, Peoples Middle School, or part of Peoples Middle School, Bates Elementary, Marshall, Timberlawn, what we're calling Witten Elementary now, but that would be Shirley and Sykes combined in one, in one, in one building, perhaps renamed. Okay, I'll name that, but, in elementary together, and then Van Winkle. And then with Jim Hill High School, Blackburn Middle, Northwest, as it articulates the IB program, one up to high school, part of Peoples Middle, depending on where those scholars live, their home address, Isabel Elementary School and Wilkins Elementary School. And then for Lanier, so Lanier has, obviously, we've already established the junior high school at Lanier. In addition, Powell Middle School, and so that's some of the students from Powell, not all, some of the students. And then Callaway, Johnson, and Walton Elementaries. And for Murrah, Bailey A-PAC, to include Bailey A-PAC program and Bailey Middle School, because some of the scholars from the former Chastain would be rerouted, rezoned at Bailey. And so, much like Murrah High School, we would operate both the A-PAC program and the regular middle school program there. And also zoned to Murrah would be Boyd, Casey, McLeod, McWilly, and Span Elementaries. And then for Provine High School, the middle school articulating there would be Blackburn, much of Blackburn Middle, Pecan Park, and John Hopkins. John Hopkins is currently zoned for Callaway, just because it's so far out west. It's zoned for Callaway, but as we've experienced it, many of those scholars, most of those scholars actually end up at Provine anyway. And so, that's the plan there. All of our program schools would remain, J-Tex, the JPS, Tugulu, Early College High School, our middle college with Jackson State, REAP, our reimagining academic progress program, the Career Development Center, our Fast Track program, which we're currently operating out of Witten Middle School, our Virtual Academy, which is coming online this year, Henley Young Detention Center, Capital City, all of those programs will continue to operate. And most of them will continue to operate where they are. There may be some movement of the REAP program, Fast Track, those two, REAP and Fast Track programs. So, just want to share a little more of the proposed changes. We already have the adjustment that's been made to Powell and Brinkley. Brinkley no longer operating as a standalone school, but really being subsumed into Lanier. Powell being the middle school in that area. And perhaps with a name change, I haven't lost track of that recommendation around Brinkley, the use of Brinkley name in the new school. Green would merge with North Jackson Elementary. And John Hopkins would be moved again to the Provine feeder pattern and out of the Callaway feeder pattern. Lots of changes in Forest Hill as Wingfield goes offline in this proposal. So Peoples would be formally merged with Witten in the Peoples Building. Oak Forest would merge with Marshall Elementary. Shirley and Sykes would be relocated to the plan, would be relocated to the Witten Building, and we know that that would require some continued work in that Witten Building to ensure that those scholars have what they need there. And so, there's, that's an example of some investments that we would have to make in order to make that work. And all of the currently zoned Wingfield scholars would be zoned for Forest Hill. Talked about again, the Witten merger with Peoples, Clausell would merge with Isabel, Obama would be merged with Northwest Middle to create a K-Aid School. Key and Clausell and Lester would be, would merge with Wilkins. And again, that's just a testament to how small those schools are. And there's a small piece of the current Wingfield zone that would be annexed to Jim Hill. And so, while most of the current Wingfield school boundaries are zoned, would go to Forest Hill, there's a small piece that would be articulated to Jim Hill. Lanier, Dawson would merge with Johnson, Smith would merge with Walton, and again, some of the Powell scholars would be zoned to Lanier. Chastain and Wells A-PAC would both merge with Bailey A-PAC under the Murrah feeder. And then lastly, Lake would merge with Pecan Park in their newly renovated building, and Rains would merge with John Hopkins. Some of the continued planning and consideration to make all of this make sense and to make it work, we'd have to, we need to continue to review and revise the boundary lines for each school. Our team has already drafted some new boundaries, and so, we're pressure testing those and looking at them more closely to see what, you know, the extent to which those make sense and what might be some pain points or challenges with any of that. Developing the plan for school-based staff optimization for transitions and/or reduction in force, there is a chance that we may need to have a reduction in force. But as we've experienced previously, and as I discussed earlier, we have such turnover each year, that there's a good chance that the vast majority of our staff members will land, those who intend to remain, will land with us in some of the positions, not necessarily in their current school or feeder pattern, but in other opportunities. At the same time, and you saw some of the numbers when we compared our district against, even our current numbers against other districts, we know that we've got to look again at the size of our central office. I will name, though, and I should have named it earlier. That data often is a bit skewed because the comparisons across districts, because not all districts count all of their staff in their counts. For many districts, they farm out, they contract for transportation, for child nutrition, for custodial work, et cetera. And so, those folks would not be necessarily counted in the central office staffing numbers. That's because it's a contracted service. And so, while we directly hire, employ all those folks and all of those different bodies of work, we have to, you know, we, of course, do count them in our numbers. So, even still, we know that if we're looking across schools for ways to operate more efficiently, then we should do the same, we need to, must do the same in our central office as well. So, that's one of the things to, to get our heads around and investigate and determine where we go with that. Also, developing a plan for scholar transitions, both the, just the transactional technical moves from this school to that, or this feeder pattern to that one, but also the supporting scholars, as we've done in the past with, this once was your school, now this is your school. And so, how do we help scholars not to have too much of a challenge in making that transition? How do we help them to transition as smoothly as possible in their families and as well as staff? Want to finalize any new or enhanced program offerings? This is something I'm very excited about and confident that we'll have at least one new major commitment program offering, if not more, but also, as I noted, likely work to enhance some of the program offers, offerings that we have, just to bolster those. Want to clarify and promote the process for repurposing JPS facilities. You all have seen, I believe, our site, our webpage, that lists our current facilities. Obviously, there will be more if this should be approved, this plan should be approved. And so, want to redouble our efforts to promote that and clarify the process even for repurposing, how folks should engage with us if they already have a program. And thankfully, we've had at least a handful of folks to reach out to us and are currently working through and considering some of our properties and using them for some of the programs that they run. But that's clearly going to be super important for us. Also, developing a prioritized list of buildings to be raised. We already know that some of our buildings are in serious disrepair. You know, we know that there's community concern about some of those buildings, and of course, that's going to be one of the major concerns that folks will lift up with this proposal, and so, we know that. And as I've lifted up previously with some other funding that we believe is going to come online for us, flexible funding, we want to utilize some of that to demolish some of the buildings that are not likely to come back online, that require major upgrades or renovations or what have you for anyone to operate, and ones that are just hardest for us to maintain or even secure. And so, that's something that we want to be open about, that conversation, and hope that community members will see this as an opportunity, especially with this opportunity to create walking trails or just a green space or something like that in the neighborhoods. And then lastly, want to promote some dates for community engagement regarding this set of proposals around optimization. We know that there's likely going to be lots of interest, and folks who will want to lift their voices up and share their thoughts, concerns, or support for the recommendation. And so, we want to make sure that we give folks ample opportunities for that. And to that, I'll now talk about community engagement. We're committing to at least four sessions to be held across our city, and that's over the course of the rest of this month and much of October. Want to hold those sessions, those community forums, at schools and at community sites, or other community sites, I should say. The first one has been scheduled for six PM, October the tenth, that's next week, at Forest Hill High School. And we will be promoting that and encouraging as many people as possible to join us for that. And again, we want to, you know, elicit as much feedback as we possibly can. We anticipate that there will be quite a bit of interest in engaging with us on these topics, and so, we're planning for that. Just so that everyone knows, our goal is to use the next two months to engage, to listen, to revise, to refine, to add, perhaps subtract, but to ensure that the plan is as informed as possible, and that we will come back to this board on December the fifth, I believe, is the first board meeting in December. And so, our plan is to come back to you with our final set of recommendations at that board meeting, to include the school closures and consolidations, any planned facility investments with the limited tax notes or otherwise, and with recommendations for building repurposing, up to and including buildings that we might be recommending by that time for, to be raised or demolished. I've said a lot, board members, and so, I'm going to pause and see what questions you have for me.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Green. So, I'll just start with some questions, and then board members, I'll look to you, and then we'll probably come back. So, some questions that I can't anticipate, well, there's several. Community Engagement Plan, what is your plan to engage community-based organizations to inform the Community Engagement Plan to make sure that we're tapping the talents, the networks, the history within the district to turn folks out to make these as robust as possible?
I want to make sure I'm understanding. What is our plan to engage with other community organizations in order to engage more broadly with community members, correct?
Yes, and I guess just, what I'm suggesting here is that, that we don't just look to ourselves to develop the Community Engagement Plan. We need to, it's times like these, we need to engage leaders, communities, there's some in this room who could probably put a finer point to what, to how this plan could be most effectively rolled out.
Gotcha. So, I don't have the answer to that, but I hear that as a recommendation and take that, receive that as a recommendation.
Dr. Seb, can I just add, because this particular night and day, October tenth, there's already a community meet in South Jackson at the East Center involving all neighborhood presidents with the commissioner, and they're talking about neighborhood development and getting monies to improve communities, all the association of South Jackson Neighborhoods is, and JAN, Jackson Association of Neighborhoods. So, those are two ones you definitely get involved with, because they kind of reach out to all of the community leaders.
And we'll, and we'll look, thank you for that, and we'll look at that date for an alternative date. We don't want to compete with, obviously, with something like that. But as well, I hear you saying that those could be organizations to tap into.
A plan to actually get the community out and be involved in this process, because they definitely need to be involved.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll keep asking questions to other folks, too. So, another question I think we should anticipate is, you know, we started the evening celebrating all the movement of schools, and by my count, there's a recommendation to close six A-rated schools.
Yes, sir.
You know, what's the rationale of closing A-rated schools?
Yeah. It's, so, one, and I, please, I'm hearing myself before I say the words. I don't mean this to be, I can't think of a better word, cheeky, but I do want to say it emphatically, those buildings are not A-rated. It's the staff and the children. And so, there's nothing about that building, absolutely nothing about that building, that ensures, insists that those children perform in the way that they do, those adults perform in the way that they do. And so, the goal will be ensuring that the same people who helped those babies to get to that level of performance are retained and concentrated, and that even more scholars have access to those same people who helped those scholars to achieve at high levels. Now, I'm also clear that there's a lot to be said around culture. I mean, it's one of our core values, so I don't want to dismiss that piece. But again, it's... But again, it's, it is not the facility itself, it's not the building itself that created or maintains those cultures that invite people to show up and do their best and try their hardest and to take feedback and improve their performance. Those are the sorts of things that thankfully, we have some experience in transporting, transferring, those sorts of things from one space to another, and that we're going to be called on to do the same. I was, I was actually doing the same count as we were talking about the performance earlier. It's like, yep, there's a number of our A-rated schools. So, so I too anticipate that folks will be concerned about that, but I just strongly urge folks not to, I honestly think it's a little disrespectful to the scholars and staff to assume that it's about that space, why they perform as they do, and not about the people themselves. And so I think it's my job and our job as leaders to help people to see that, like, you know, you're a star wherever you go, and there are opportunities for you to be a star in a building where the bathrooms and the air conditioning and other stuff work.
Do we know what the, what in the past, what our highest enrollment rate was and what that number was, what year that was?
Thirty-something is the, I don't remember the exact number, but we can...
2001.
2001. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that. Ms. Williams here, keeping track of this, okay, thank you.
And Dr. Green, I, I agree with everything you just said. This may be the fourth wave of school closures that I've been asked to vote on, and it's, it's a, it's a question that's off, is raised every time. I think your messaging is solid, but it's going to take repeated, and frankly, belief in it, so.
And the point that I made earlier about transition, and, I mean, as I was opening this conversation, I'm also clear that, you know, change is hard for people. It's hard for adults, it's hard for children, and if we don't manage the change process closely, even folks who typically perform at really high levels could be all caught up in this change and get off their game. And so it, the point is, is very well taken, I just, I think it's important for us not to allow folks to place all of the power of what we've done in a particular building.
Mm-hmm, well said. So by my count, we currently have nine vacant buildings. We're about to add 14.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And frankly, our track record as a board for moving on property is, it's nonexistent. And so I, I know we're going to get the question, what are we going to do with these buildings? And, and we're more than doubling it, in a city that's losing population and where vacant buildings are not just limited to schools.
Right.
So what is our, how are we going to, what's our plan?
Yeah.
Because I can, that's going to, I think when we go into community, this point is going to be front and center.
And before you answer that, can I add?
Yes, ma'am, please.
At one point, when we were talking about closing, I'm, well, I remember a discussion about first right of refusal from charters and things like that, so I want, if you elaborate on that when you talk about whatever you're going to say.
Sure. So a couple of things, one, as I, as we've, as we've been at this, more and more, and conversations have evolved, and, you know, all of the fits and starts around repurposing or considering, considerations for the repurposing of buildings, I mentioned this earlier, we've certainly tried to get smarter and, and learn from other districts and, and, you know, these are not just our issues, so we've been looking for options and answers and strategies in other places. I've said it now a couple of times, but I want to lift it up because I do hope that folks will warm to and be open to the idea, the, the option of raising buildings. You know, some of our, some of our buildings are in a bad way, and certainly, we could invest, somebody could invest money to bring them back up, but absent that somebody, those somebodies, those organizations ready or that could be ready in short order, I think this is an opportunity for us to bite the bullet. And so we will be coming to you, board members, with buildings that we want to recommend, that we, we raise, that we demolish, and going forward, and that we create some kind of a green space or something. Actually, it's not unlike what we're hearing from the, from the council and our libraries, with regard to one of our libraries. And, and I'm convinced that there will be those who, who might not like that idea. We're in a situation where we absolutely have to optimize, we've got to do some right, right sizing, we absolutely have to, and it's, and we're well beyond the one or two schools. We're so far beyond that. Not to mention, we already have some buildings that frankly, will likely be, one or two at least, will likely be on that list for demolition, so there's that. So that's a whole strategy there, and, and, you know, there'll be opportunities for folks to lift their voices up and say, yes, yes, please knock this one down, or, you know, spare this one, look at these over there. So there'll be some opportunities for that. In addition, now that we have a more comprehensive study of our properties and, you know, have a little more information as to what exists and the zoning and, and all that sort of thing, I think we go into these conversations better equipped to engage and consider what might be. We're not in the development business, but in partnership with, I mean, as an example, Lake Haiko, seems like everybody and their father wants to be in partnership with us developing at Lake Haiko. I mean, that's a good problem to have, that there's so much interest there, but I, I believe there could be other opportunities that we consider. And so, you know, using some of the, the data in the study that has already been done across properties, relationships that have been built, interests that has already bubbled up for this school or that school or the other, I do believe there's some opportunities there as well. We know that we're, we're beyond our skis in this whole property redevelopment, repurposing work. There is a Jackson redevelopment authority, right? There are individual developers out there who may not be ready right, right now, but who could be ready and in queue and thinking about what might be. Now, you know, I, I know there's a whole set of concerns or, or cautions as to, you know, who you engage with, who you plan with, et cetera, but, you know, at some point, we've got to open up to those conversations and be open to what folks might come back with. Kind of the long way of, of saying, we're open to several pathways, there's, as I understand, as I understand it and as, as I see it today, there's no one pathway to address all of this, but certainly in partnership with others who do this work all day, every day, I think there's greater opportunities for us. Last thing I'll say on this, we, each year, we make an ask of some funders for support around some of our strategic work. Oftentimes, the, the asks are more centered on some of our academic programming. More recently, the ask has included support for helping us to engage with, you know, consultants or what have you around property. And so increased capacity to help to manage around this is yet another strategy that we're already working to employ. Yeah, and, and there we are, there, I would imagine that there will, much like the community engagement specific to the schools and, and do you or don't you close or consolidate a particular school, open and, and open engagement with potential investors or, or developers around properties could be needed. We've been a bit reluctant to do that as we've tried to better understand, you know, where are we with our readiness to sell or lease or, or otherwise with our buildings? But these are things that clearly we're at the point where we've got to move. To your question, Mrs. Thompson, around the first right of refusal, as we've come to understand a couple of things, one, written into state statute, as I understand it, there's an opportunity for us to identify what we've been calling good causes, good things for good folks, something like that, something along those lines. Yeah, yeah. But an opportunity for us to identify an organization that, that is doing or would be, could be doing some work in the community and could benefit from operating in one of our buildings, and, and as an opportunity to engage with them to provide, in one way or another, sale, lease, property for them to operate. So that, that is an opportunity there, and then of course, if we're looking to raise a building and not necessarily surplus it, that could be an opportunity for us there as well. It's one, it's, at the point at which you surplus the building that charters are contemplated as having some right to the opportunity. Surplusing to sell or lease, right?
If you just don't use it, then the charters don't have an opportunity, but if you declare it surplus and want to dispose of it, then the primary way or the first way is you have to do it by sealed competitive bids, and that's essentially the highest cash offer. So that's when you have to offer, you have to give the charters the first right of refusal. If you go through the alternative method, and that's when you identify another entity, it can be for-profit, nonprofit, you still declare it surplus, but if it falls within that range of, you know, charitable purposes that the legislature has specified, then you can sell, lease, or even donate it to that entity for that statutory authorized purpose. The board just has to make a finding that the benefit that will accrue to the community that comes from not selling it or leasing it for less than fair market value, or giving it to somebody and the district not receiving something monetary return, that the benefit to the community, the board, I'm sorry, the benefit to the community is commensurate with that. So you just have to get equal value, but the board has a lot of discretion and, and flexibility to determine that there can be intangible benefit or non-monetary benefit and value that is equal to a dollar value.
That makes so much sense to me, thank you.
I should have deferred to the attorney anyway.
This is, I, I just wanted to call out one thing that you said during that discussion, and that was about raising buildings and the, and, and not raising them solely for the purpose of knocking a building down so that we don't have to pay for upkeep or because it's in, it's in a difficult place. Like you mentioned, the Welty Library, which is, which is currently, the intention is to raise that building, through the Jackson Hines Library System Board has approved that, I think, already, and I think it's already gone to council, but part of the planning for that was to link it back to the two museums so that the green space would be utilized in that way, right? And so I do just want to encourage, challenge everybody who's involved in this process that when we talk about taking buildings and, and, when we talk about raising a building and then what follows, trying to imagine the right ways to have that benefit the community that surround that building, because it just doesn't need to be a double loss, right? It doesn't need to be a lost school and institution and just a departure with an open field, right? That's, we have some opportunities here, as hard as this is, to really benefit some of those areas, and whether that's linking into neighborhoods that surround the buildings, whether that's linking into parks or buildings or, you know, even if it's businesses that would benefit from having walking space near, near their buildings, the way that they, the way they have near the State Farm Building or whatever, and like, everybody can walk around the lake, same idea. So I just want to push us to not stop short, because I think we've got some chance to do good stuff there.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I imagine we'll, we'll have some general criteria to help support the decision-making around or even prioritization of this build, building versus this building, and then of course, some level of direction from community members around. Obviously, it would be in everybody's best interest if we had a community to say, yes, this one, start here, I would love that. And to the extent that we can, you know, envision with them, start here, knock this down, and yes, we want a walking trail, or yes, we want a, you know, sort of, I don't know, I don't want to overcommit to what we could do, but, but, you know, to, to ready the property for something, could be a garden, could be some outdoor play space, I don't know.
You want me to go? I think I only have one more, I've exhausted them all. The last one, again, Mr. McGuffey, I appreciate the opportunity framing, is, we also tonight have before us an opportunity to vote on a limited tax note.
Yes, sir.
And so it seems like, and, and Mrs. Thompson, I think you were, I guess, Mr. McGuffey, you were too, when, when, when Witten combined with Peoples, and, and just the, the difference that walking into a beautiful facility makes in terms of seeing what's ahead versus seeing what was left. And so it just seems like the fact that we have, you know, resources to invest in the places where students will be going, it seems like often we should at least work to, which is already, it's in the materials, there's one we're going to seek to maximize, so that's, it's, I'm, I'm excited, appreciative, and then also too, just thinking through, what are the creative strategies to use some of those resources to reinvest in these, these vacant properties for development purposes? That, I think, is, is another way where we invest in what we have to make it beautiful and just lift up the students, and then also to, to be a part of the renewal as well, and so.
Yes, sir. Now, we, regarding the, the potential for additional resourcing to invest in these properties, we, I think there's a, a lot of excitement and maybe angst around, you know, decision-making with those dollars and, and how to get the most bang and to stretch them as far as possible, you know? We're clear that the potential $30 million, even if you spent it all on just building upgrades, would not do all that is needed, and so we're thinking about that plus other resourcing that we either have or could have down the road to do some of, of what's needed. But for sure, like, we're committed that the lived experience... But for sure, we're committed that the lived experience for our scholars and team members is far better with, on the other side of this optimization than it is today. Chasing every morning, poor Sandra Robinson and her team, chasing every morning after buildings that have Freon leaks and chillers that have tripped and blah, 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 this, blah, 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 that, and I can't even, I don't even know all the language. Every morning? It's ridiculous. I've talked about this before, but I know that people cannot, you cannot appreciate the weight of that. You cannot if you're not a part of that work. And I'm not even the one running from school to school trying to make sure that the AC works. That's other team members and partners. So, yeah, we appreciate and agree that there's, there's some opportunities there to make some really smart and strategic investments in buildings with those funds, but as well as some other funds, even in our ongoing budgeting around facilities maintenance, that we've just got to be, we've got to double down on.
So, I'm sorry. It's hard. This, okay, you didn't go figures, Ms. Figures. This is just really hard because I guess my, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around, the investments that we have made in some of these places. And it just feels, especially the list that's in mine.
Yes, ma'am.
Some significant investments that we've made in these buildings.
And me, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
So, one, you know, there's a huge sensitivity to any changes that are proposed related to South Jackson and West Jackson. And for lots of reasons, but I just want to name that there's absolutely, from Eric Green on through the team, there's huge sensitivity to any of that. And looking across the board and how does that compare to any recommendations being made across the district? Reality is, and I will commit to coming back to you with actual numbers, but the population decline in South Jackson is real and is outsized when compared to other areas of the district, right? And so we're responding to the population decline. Now, we can talk all day about why that is happening, but the reality is it's happening. And so, you know, we can't shy away from like, it doesn't make sense for me to close some other schools where they're actually growing or at capacity. It just doesn't make sense. Whereas others continue to decline. To the other piece about investments. And I've said this to, I said this to someone not too, too long ago. You know, I struggle with that as well. We have, we've made investments across the district. And decisions were made six years ago to take the, I'm specifically talking about our bond program, to take that money, which is pretty clear that folks understood even then that, you know, there are many more needs that existed, but that's, you know, what we were able to amass and get approved for. And overwhelmingly, folks knew those, there were some needs that needed to be addressed through the bond program. And, you know, commitments to invest across the district because there were needs across the district. And at that time, we had children in all those buildings. And, you know, while I've got children in building X, the bathrooms need to, restrooms need to work. The AC needs to work. The building can't be raining on children and teachers as they are teaching, as many folks have experienced through much of the time that I've been here. Sadly, I'm still walking into some buildings in their buckets. And that's not because, you know, money was misspent. That's not because folks missed, you know, issues or what have you. It's not because we were shortsighted. There were children and team members in the buildings. And for as long as they're there, we need to be invested in those buildings, like we are right now. Right today, we're investing in some of the buildings that we have, that we're recommending that we close. Why? Because there are people in those buildings. That's also why we need to make these decisions now. So we can stop investing in those buildings and divert those funds to other buildings where we can aggregate, concentrate those dollars to make a greater impact. I'm with you. This is tough. This is weighty. I met with the principals just before this board meeting. You could see on their faces and you could feel, you know, just the tone. This is, this is a tough set of recommendations. And I swear to you, I would not recommend this. I promise you, I don't want this smoke. I would not bring this to you if we were not in a situation where we simply cannot prolong it anymore. We cannot.
I have one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we, did we ever completely get the comprehensive study done? And are we using data from that study at all for some of this that we're?
Yes, yes, and yes. Yes, it's complete. The study is complete. There is some additional planning for, like HEICO in particular, that is planned once we get closer to the closeout of the former LEC. But the comprehensive study is complete. We have those reports. And yes, specifically as we think about raising buildings, there are recommendations there that, based on the cost of renovating the buildings, carrying costs, the size, the zoning in that area, several indicators that would suggest that building A might be more appropriate to raise than building B, where there could be some rezoning, it's near some conversations at least of redevelopment in the area or not too far, those sorts of things.
Are we working with, like, the City of Jackson and their comprehensive study, and maybe Jackson State and other universities and their comprehensive studies? Are we at talks or in any kind of communications in rooms with them, with what they're doing with what we're doing?
No. No. Not as yet and not in any formal or in-depth way.
Is that something that we possibly look into?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. And then we'll just need to come to grips with where anybody is in their planning and what they know today versus, you know, where they think they might be in a little ways out. But still, the conversations and the aligned planning efforts make perfect sense. And that could absolutely inform, you know, whether a particular building should be considered for, you know, leasing or what have you to another entity or perhaps to something that's aligned with either of those groups, the city or Jackson State and some of their planning. Or raising it because something else is coming and this property here could very easily align and fold into some of the broader planning. We receive that. And we will get meetings scheduled with those. Well, we're already teed up to engage with, you said, the City of Jackson. We're already teed up with JRA to engage with them, but not specifically the city. But that, too, will follow up directly with them.
Jackson Redevelopment Authority?
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions, board members?
It's probably less of a question. It's probably less of a question, but more of a commentary and observation.
Yes, sir.
I especially like what Mrs. Thompson said. And I'm going to open with that observation, if I may. We did, Ms. Thompson, have a roadmap created for, some time ago, for the, for just this moment, so that it could guide us in our deliberation. Because as has been suggested for quite some time, we knew that we were going to arrive at the point where we were going to have to make these difficult decisions. The comprehensive land use study is what we, what it started out. But, you know, sometimes the best things start out, you don't get everything. But at least we got a fair roadmap and a great inventory of what we have.
Right.
So, and Jackson Public School is the largest property owner in the City of Jackson. I'm going to say, Honorable President, I don't know whether Mrs. Thompson has a copy of it.
Two books.
Yes. Okay. And Mr. McGuffey?
I do not.
I would love for them to have.
Yes, sir. We'll make it happen.
Okay. And in that roadmap, it says that it costs $200 to $300 a square foot to remodel or renovate some of these structures that we have. $200 to $300 a square foot to renovate, to remodel. And it probably, it's not in there, but it probably would be a little less to raise it, as the superintendent says, and build a new, you know, a new building that was made for a modern school that could support scholars in their best and highest endeavors. That's one observation. Another one is, Honorable Superintendent, you remember when the EPA President Chairman Reagan, Regan, came? And went on that tour? And one of the places that he went was to Wilkins.
Yes, sir.
And Wilkins Elementary was closed. And at that time,
Yes, sir.
And it was closed because my understanding was the sewer line, the main sewer line for that community ran through the front door of Wilkins. It comes across Wingfield's campus and runs right through. Wilkins is an older school in Wingfield, and it comes right through there. So the line is still there, and it will be there as long as that community is going to need a sewer line. So it may be, I don't know, that's Dr. Harriston. I think that's in her jurisdiction. But it's something to think about, that it's an older building and also in the community line runs through there.
Yes, sir.
Which is, you know, we don't know what can happen, given the age of the infrastructure. And then this is general and closing observation. In addition to the 2005 piece of public policy that you referred to, Good Things for Good People, there's another piece of public policy passed by this immediate pass legislative session and signed by the governor, that public schools' property can be transferred to private ownership for the interests of the community with no, you know, so
Opportunities.
Look into that.
Yes, sir.
And see, you know.
As other opportunities for us to utilize the property.
Duellin came. We lost Duellin as a result of the 2005 piece. But we may gain a good bit more because of the 2023 piece.
Yes, sir. So we'll be sure to pull both those up and as we're, I can imagine us developing something that talks about some different, as we conceive of it today, some different pathways, raising buildings, selling buildings outright, leasing some buildings that are in somewhat better position. Perhaps this, you know, some other pathways, the, you know, donating buildings to entities for this, that, or the third. Some of the different strategies that we could utilize, getting something that more clearly articulates those pathways for all of us. And then considering using that almost as a filter or something to guide conversation with each of the properties could be a way to better conceive of these opportunities.
I'm sorry. I hear you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions, comments?
I've got a few. Kind of want to, as the least wise person up here, I wanted to wait my turn. So one thing I want to applaud for this, I know how hard this is to even suggest. And I think the, it might not be the best word, but what I'll call aggressive sort of list and plan and modeling. It's hard to do. I think it's, in my view, it's, you know, you and I have had conversations. I think it's necessary. And so I do want to applaud the work that went into putting this together as it stands right now. I have probably a question that I think very few might ask. So I want to ask it myself. Have we been aggressive enough at the middle school, high school levels?
Thank you for that question, Mr. McGuffey. So I pushed hard. Team really sharpened the pencils and did a lot of analysis. Given our current facilities, this is about as far as we can go. Given the size of our current facilities, the size of, you know, Cercy was, I can't remember the capacity, four something? Four fifty. I don't, we have been really good about not second guessing decisions made by others before us. But that's a building where I question why it was built at that size. Right? And so for that and for, you know, even Lanier is a somewhat smaller building, on and on and on. Given the size of our facilities, we couldn't, at this point, close more and consolidate them. It would require that we do some substantial expansion of probably several buildings. And/or, and this is what I heard and was really keen on from Mr. Figures' comments, look at some new builds, which would be amazing. And frankly, would be the best of all worlds. We just got to figure them. We just gotta figure the money out. But, but given our size, it's not, you know, it's reasonable to consider a three or four high school district of seventeen thousand scholars. Now, you typically see those larger high schools in counties and, and more rural areas, where you're pulling from a far, far distance, but it's not, it's not uncommon. But again, given the size of the buildings, we couldn't fit all the scholars. We couldn't even, I looked at reducing one more high school, and we couldn't make it fit.
So, so I do want to kind of double back to something that you just touched on. In making this plan, part of it, part of it is hard and sad, part of it has to be hopeful, and part of it has to be, what do we want this thing to look like? Not five years from now, but fifteen years from now. Is there two questions, really? And, and one of them is a, is a depressing question, so I'll start with that, and I'll go to the, to the more optimistic question. So, the first question is, my understanding, and I think you even said this in your presentation, that in the, in the student population decline, the majority of that decline has been seen in the elementary levels? That it's more pronounced there than it is at the high school, middle school levels? Is that right?
Uh, no.
Evenly spread?
No. So, our, our biggest, I don't want to say our biggest decline, no, the, the biggest declines are more geographical in the district.
Okay.
We just have legacy, many more.
Yeah.
Elementaries, so we're, we're more aggressively recommending closures of elementaries, but I would, I would say that. And, and there's also, there's also less births. Right? So, there will be.
Yeah. Okay, so that handles one thing, 'cause I, I had it in my head, this conception that we, that could be sort of a precursor to greater loss down the road, but, but if that, if I'm wrong about that, fair enough. I guess I just want to push as hard as I can for us to think about, if, if we really could, right? If there is some bond offering or whatever that we envision and we really want to get to, then let's, let's think about it now, and let's think about what these schools look like. Okay, if you could build a high school that could accommodate closing one of these, what does it look like? Where are we talking about? It, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to go through this level of pain, to go through something equally hurtful in five years. I mean, that's, that's my perspective on this. And so, I, I just want us thinking as broadly as we can about where we want to be, and, and what that may mean, what the implications are for whatever school. So, that's hard, and who knows if we can get there by December, but, but I, I really want to, I really want to encourage us to be that thoughtful.
I receive that.
I want to just add, you know, 'cause I just said, A schools bring people back to this capital city, and the capital city is on the rise, and we will have new people moving back here and wanting to bring their students back here. So, we cannot make, we, we need to make the decisions, I get that. But I also think we need to have churning in the back of our head where this next move is going, where are we gonna do to make it bigger, better, and be able to house the students in the, in that we have to do some other kind of changes or arrangements in the future. Gotta look, we gotta look at both tracks, where we are and where we're going.
I receive it. I do. I, I will admit that, I'm using all these colloquials, but there's something in, anyway, the point that I'm making is that I, I've, I've been reluctant to have this conversation, reluctant to even consider going back to the community and asking for additional funding. But you are right. We, we really need to be casting that vision for not just better, 'cause I do believe this will make it better.
Yep.
But why couldn't we have the community college, high school model with field houses and, you know, labs and all sorts of things that you find in some neighboring districts? There's no reason why we couldn't. I receive it.
I mean, and there are moments that, that where there is a decision that we could make, and this does involve community engagement. I mean, we could go to fifty-seven million on the tax notes, it's gonna raise taxes in the city, but we could do it, you know, it, it, we could do it. And if we're building a high school and all that, in three more years, you know, well, I have to look at the debt service schedule, but there is, there, I know another bond is maturing, but we gotta think through it. If we do that and we raise taxes here, does the city then support another one down the line? I mean, there's, there's all these different things, but there, there are.
Opportunities.
There are opportunities. That's how we frame it, and, I mean, maybe, we're gonna, I know we're gonna get to the limited tax note section of the agenda, but maybe we model it out, maybe we ask Mr. Thompson to model it out, what is it? If we go from thirty to fifty-seven, what, what is the effect on everyday Jacksonians? You know, so, because I know at fifty-seven, then you can build a new school. There's all kinds of other questions that you all raised, where do you put all those things, but at least for right now, let's not just limit ourselves to the, just doing what we've always done to keep things where they are.
I receive that.
Yeah.
And, and thank you for that. Honestly.
Yeah.
Honestly, thank you for it. 'Cause what I've been seeing and anticipating is fighting just to get this, but you are right, we actually should be talking about, and what about the Cadillac? Like, these Toyotas, no offense to anybody driving a Toyota, but these Toyotas are nice, they'll get us from here to there. What about the Cadillac? And why shouldn't we be going after that?
Absolutely, 'cause I, when I, when, when you say, what you say about why we're closing the buildings, it's because they are just horrible.
Insufficient.
Insufficient for our students. We're not saying, we are saying the shrinking and all of that, but we're saying that these buildings are just insufficient for our children. And so, at the same time that we're closing, we're also still saying our children need better. They deserve better, they absolutely deserve better. And I would rather fight to have them to get better.
Yes, ma'am.
On the front end, even though it, it feels like a oxymoron. It does, and it's gonna sound like that in the community, 'cause first of all, they're gonna fight, they're gonna say, why are you closing your A-rated schools? The buildings are horrible. So, now, what we want to do is, we're gonna do this, but eventually, we know, because we, as enrollment inclines, increases, instead of declines, we'll have it. They'll come back, they're coming back. They are coming back.
Thank you.
I just want to add one, one last thing, and it, and it's just, it's been in the back of my head, I am so new here, so, and I appreciate everybody's grace for letting me air that every now and then. I made it a point to try to go to, and I think I did go, to every high school, right? At the beginning of the school year. I made it a point to go to as many middle schools as I could, I made it a point to get to as many, to, to see as many of these places as we could, and the reason I wanted to do it is, number one, just to learn. But the other reason is because it, it gave me an opportunity to go see all the amazing administrators and students and teachers and staff members who were, we've talked about here, the, the level of teaching that they're doing, the level of coaching and guidance that they're providing, but also the level of MacGyver fix-it, we're just gonna do whatever it is we have to do to keep these kids in a space that's under eighty, you know? I mean, the level of work that was being put in just to do that does not match the excellence of the kids and the excellence of the kids who will continue to come through this program. So, the first thing you let off with is, why are we doing this? It's for excellence purposes? I mean, I think about, and, and I, this is literally just plucking one out of, out of the air, but it's an easy example, going through Jim Hill and the horrible conditions that they had at the beginning of the school year? And the leadership that, that Bobby Brown gives that place and the energy that they have, the energy that exists right next door at Jackson State? That is a, that has an opportunity to be a sort of beautiful area of growth, not just for, not just for one set of kids, not just for one, you know, school, but for the city as a whole. You talk about making things great in Jackson. Pair those two things up. Don't just, don't just bandage that school back together because it, because it's working so well, and it is, by the way, B-school, they're gonna get even better, I mean, there's no question in my mind, they've got so much energy and talent in that place. Give them somewhere amazing to be. And so, that's, 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 that's my, that's my preachy stuff, which is, I want us thinking as creatively as we can, not just about doing the hard work of creating this school as foreclosures, but creating, being as creative as we can about how do we give even better, more excellent, better than they even anticipate space to match the talent in the place?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just conclude, and this has been hint at again, I want to thank all the staff that worked on this proposal. I know that this has frankly been years in the making, and so, we get it in PowerPoints and pretty charts, but I don't want to discount the hours and hours and hours of, of work that, that went into it. And so, Dr. Green, thank you, and thank all of you as well.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on, board members.
Let's say that.
I'm sorry. Before we go to the next item. I'd like to take a point of privilege.
Please.
I have two special guests that made a special trip here to see me. So, I'd like to just have the board and administration and those that join us from wherever you are to know who they are. Anybody that has ever read John Dittmer's book, Dr. Harriston, Local People, where he identifies a significant number of people that were freedom workers from around the state of Mississippi. In that book, he mentions Winston and Dovey Hudson from Leake County, Mississippi, who led the movement in Leake County, but filed the first education equity lawsuit in the state of Mississippi, because they wanted the right to own and keep their own schools that had gotten quite popular. We have her grandson with us. Young man? And he, he.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
John Dittmer also mentions a number of freedom workers that are local and that came to Mississippi to fight, to help local people fight for equity and justice and inclusion. And this young lady came as a mere teenager and worked in Leake County with the Hudson's and the movement there, and, and she's also here, Marilyn Lowen. So, thank you, Honorable President, Superintendent, for allowing me that privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Figgers, and you will always have that privilege, at least as long as I'm sitting over here. All right, board members.
I, I want you to stay in that seat.
No, it gets hotter and hotter every day.
But we with you, Honorable President.
All right, let's move on to ESR three. Mr. Warren Bowen from Triage Facility, oh, Mrs. Robinson is, is also gonna join us this evening, is gonna give us an update to hear about, so we can get an update on the progress and some, some, some things to celebrate.
Good evening, Dr. Sebag, board members, Dr. Green, and you remember, it will be Warren Bowen with Triage Facility Consultants doing the presentation for ESR three, and if there are any questions, I'll be here to support.
Great, thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Warren Bowen, I'm, I'm the president and CEO of Triage Facility Consultants. It certainly is a privilege to be here with you, board and superintendent and your team. If, before I get started, if it's okay, I did bring a, a portion of our team here, and I'd like for them to just stand up, so you'll know who they are and who's on site. Team, the ones that are here, would y'all please stand for us? We, we, yeah, we, our team, we have a full team of experts from civil engineers to safety specialists to, you know, all areas and all disciplines in the industry to make sure, even from our financial and exercise, one of our team members is a disabled vet, and she is, she was a federal auditor, and so she handles all of our ESR auditing in all cases to ensure that we stay in line as well. So, I appreciate you all being here with us. I'll get right into it.
Okay.
This, this update will cover the ESR three projects, its scheduling, and its budget updates as well. Wells A-PAC is one of our schools, that project is currently, and I will say this, as you see these numbers, these numbers are reflective of August fifteenth through September fifteenth, so just one month. So, you'll see these numbers, these numbers are strictly reflective of that, and these projects have gone on further than, as, as of today. Wells A-PAC School District is, uh, school is a four hundred and thirteen thousand dollar project. That project currently is at eighty-six percent complete at that time, roughly fourteen percent to complete, and was due to be completed on August the seventh. Howard Middle School, one point three million dollar project, that project is at current, at that particular state's twenty-six point six-four percent, and I didn't go on the, on the slide before, but this project encompasses one set of girls' restrooms, one set of boys' restrooms, and window replacements. Right now, that project is currently on schedule as well. Our next project would be John Hopkins Elementary. It is a one point seven million dollar project, that project at the, at that time, at this time of this presentation, preparation was forty-three point eight-two percent. That project consists of eight sets of girls' bathroom, restroom renovations, eight sets of boys' restroom renovations, new VCT floors, and is currently on schedule.
Are you saying eight sets? Eight?
Eight. Eight sets. Eight sets.
It's a huge.
Eight.
So I'm sitting here saying one.
Update assistance, we apologize.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'll try to speak a little bit clearer.
No, you're clear, I'm just, my paperwork is saying something different than what you, she said it hadn't been updated.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No, no, what I was saying, they made a late update yesterday, yes.
I got you.
Jim Hill is a seven point three million dollar project. That project is currently twenty-five percent in, on its completion state. That project includes indoor air quality upgrades, four new chillers, boilers, new LED lighting and cooling and ceilings in its corridors, and new package units. It is currently on schedule, and it is a very extensive project. McColl Park Elementary is a project that is a little bit over nine million dollars. That project right now is running about thirty days behind schedule. We have experienced some equipment issues and some site issues that we had to work out. And currently, our recovery plan is already in play now. That time was as of September fifteenth. So currently, again, we are in our recovery stage and expect to recover all of those days, if not more. That project includes a new facade, new fronts on the buildings, replacement of, of the interior envelope, of the exterior envelope, I'm sorry, new ceilings and HVAC upgrades, structural repairs, and structural repair is very important with McColl Park Elementary, new exterior drainage systems. The project is scheduled to be completed June fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. Whitten, Whitten Middle School, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar budget on that project. We are twenty percent into it. That project consists of student restroom renovations, faculty restroom renovations, mealwork replacements in the, in the sixth grade building, and is currently on schedule as well. Boyd and Green Elementary project is about fifteen percent complete. It's an eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar project. It consists of new windows on the west elevation of Boyd and new windows on the east elevation of Green. It is currently on schedule as well. Boyd Elementary is another project, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project, four sets of girls' bathroom renovations and four sets of boy bathroom, boys' bathroom renovations. Currently on schedule, we are sixteen point four-four percent completed on that job and moving forward fairly aggressively. Bailey A-PAC is a big project, seventeen million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That project consists of a new roof, new flooring, that's on the ground floor, new ceilings and lighting in the corridors, drainage repairs, HVAC upgrades and indoor quality upgrades, and restroom, restroom renovation. That project is currently on schedule, and certainly more than three point nine-nine percent has been completed. It is an aggressively moving job at this time, and it is currently on schedule as well.
I had a quick question about Bailey, just because, spent a lot of time in that building. Are the lockers still gonna be there? And I'm not saying they need to come out, I, just a question.
You know, we have some historical factors involved, some historical factors involved with Bailey. So what we do with Bailey is not driven strictly by what the district likes, but also within Mississippi Department of Archives and History. I like you, I, you know, I have questions about the lockers as well, but we, we have some other entities that we have to include in those, in that call.
Okay, thanks.
That project is currently on schedule and moving, moving further aggressive as well, at seven percent complete at that time. McLeod, I'm sorry, McLeod Elementary, I touched the button. Nine hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. That project consists of plumbing upgrades in classrooms, classroom and restroom renovations, new meal work in classroom, new exterior doors. It is on schedule, and we are at seven percent complete on that job as of the fifteenth of September. Currently, we recently awarded some projects, the Career Development Center, is classroom upgrades, and Package B is, is to be noted for several reasons. One, the leadership in your facility department really, really made a good call in packaging Callaway, Kirksey, North Jackson, and McWillie HVAC improvements. Why? The industry right now in the HVAC world is, you know, the big shark is the equipment. That's just, that's just real. And so the little guy, you know, he gets put on the back burner. I need a hundred thousand dollar worth of equipment versus somebody needing ten million worth, the hundred thousand dollars gets set in the audience somewhere and rarely looked at. So she's made a really, really good call in this and being efficient, and, and being cost efficient as well, because packaging this together gives us a bigger footprint in that warehouse when we get, when, when, when it's time for the sale. So I, you know, I applaud you on that, because oftentimes, we just do quick project, quick project, quick project, and you pay a considerable amount more for that project because it was pieced together versus, please go that way. This concludes my update. Any questions, I'll be more than happy to entertain them. Mr. Figures, it's good to see you, sir.
God bless.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. And board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you. We appreciate all the work and for the very detailed update.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
And thank you to all the team members who came out and spent their dinner hour with us.
Got more than you bargained for.
All right, well, next we'll move on to our information action items. We have the request to approve the renewal agreement between American College Testing and the Jackson Public School District. Ms. Lakeisha Marshall-Thomas, our Assistant Superintendent of the High School Division, will present this information. And then I see, I'm just looking ahead, Mrs. Thompson, Marshall-Thomas, if you want to present the next one after this as well.
Great evening, Dr. Sebag, board members, Dr. Green. The administration presents for approval the renewal agreement between American College Testing and Jackson Public Schools. Under the terms of this MOU, JPS will participate in the administration of ACT district testing that enables our high school students to offer an additional ACT on a weekday during regular school hours. The ACT provides students with an opportunity to assess their academic skills and level of college readiness in a familiar environment. Additionally, having this option raises college awareness and exposure among all students rather than only self-selected college-bound students. And for some scholars, this opportunity may help them realize their potential from college and other career fields. And we are having our JPS ACT Day on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Marshall-Thomas. Board members, any questions, comments? It was great to see this recommendation, thank you for bringing it to us.
The administration also recommends the approval of the Miranda of Understanding with Heinz Community College and Jackson Public Schools to offer dual credit and dual enrollment courses during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The purpose of dual enrollment and dual credit programs are to offer structured opportunities for qualified high school students to simultaneously enroll in college courses at Mississippi Public Institutions of Higher Learning, or Mississippi Colleges, Mississippi Community Colleges, I'm sorry, that provide pathways leading to academic or career and technical post-secondary credits. And so this MOU makes the program accessible to schools and scholars in our school communities who wish to participate. And if approved, this dual credit and dual enrollment program will continue to be offered at all seven of our high schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall-Thomas. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none. Oh, one thing I do want to ask, because you shared some, I thought was really data we want to lift up. So, Mrs. Marshall-Thomas, could you just share any perspective you have on the demand for these programs amongst our scholars? And then also, how, what does our pass rate look amongst our scholars taking these college-level classes?
Yeah, and so we went back the last few, three years, and in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, our pass rate was ninety-one percent. Our last, our pass rate for last school year was ninety-six point four percent. So of the one thousand one hundred and seventeen dual credit courses, we offered one thousand one hundred and four of those students passed their coursework. And so, we've been really, really intentional about providing additional supports to scholars that are taking the dual credit courses, and we think that that has really, really had an impact on their, on the outcomes.
Great, thanks for listening, just wanted to lift that up. And I mean, just the, that also, that's not just a state, I mean, it's a huge statement on what we're doing, but also it's setting these kids up, these students, these scholars up for, I mean, that's, that's college credit.
Yes, and one thing we've seen, we've seen that students that, that take dual credit courses in high school, those students tend to persist more in college once they arrive.
Very good, thank you for sharing that extra information. All right, next we'll invite Dr. Chinello Evans, our middle school assistant superintendent. She will present the request to approve award RFP two thousand and twenty-three fifteen to Schoolhouse World for High Impact Tutorial Materials. Dr. Evans?
Dr. Green, President Sebag, board members and supporters, good evening. The administration recommends the approval of the agreement between the district and Schoolhouse World. Schoolhouse, co-founded by Sal Khan, founder of Khan Academy, is a free platform offering online tutoring in over one hundred countries to thousands of learners. This partnership with Schoolhouse is a part of a greater middle school division effort to move the middle to the top. One strategy being employed is High Impact Tutorial. This tutorial is rooted in research about the gains experienced from targeted tutorial that occurs at least three times per week for at least thirty minutes in a small group of a four-to-one student-teacher ratio. Students at four middle schools who earned a performance level of three on the two thousand and twenty-three state assessment will begin this report to help them address unfinished learning in order to obtain a proficiency level of performance level four or above on the two thousand and twenty-four MAP assessment. At a future board meeting, an MOU will be presented to provide High Impact Tutorial using outcomes-based contracting to the remaining middle schools.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Board members, any questions or comments? Great, thank you, Dr. Evans. Board members, let's go ahead, and since these are more program-related, let's go ahead and have a motion and a vote on, on items A through C. Mr. Figures has moved Mrs. Thompson a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next we'll invite Mrs. Margaret Purnell, our Executive Director of Business Services. She will present items D through F. Mrs. Purnell, let's roll A through, excuse me, D through E. We'll vote at that, and then we'll do the limited tax note.
Okay. Good afternoon, Board President, Dr. Sebag, board members, Superintendent Dr. Green, colleagues, JPS team, and all of our JPS community. On behalf of Mr. Burke, in his absence, the administration is requesting approval to transfer a maximum of eight hundred thousand dollars from Sixteenth Section revenue proceeds to district maintenance for operational expenses for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. This request is in accordance with Mississippi Code twenty-nine, three, one fifteen regarding the entertaining, authorizing the revenues and the use of these funds. These funds will, are used to support the Sixteenth Section projects along with operational expenses for the district. And as board members, if you may recall, during the original budget that we present during twenty-two, twenty-three, the Sixteenth Section is always a part of that budget, and allocated in there are funds that needs to be transferred out for district purposes. And this, all this is, is just a request to get that approved at this time. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Mrs. Purnell. Any questions, board members? Okay, let's move on to budgets.
Okay. The administration has recommended approval of the district's amendment budgets for certain funds that we have initially. When we did the initial, original budgets in twenty-three, twenty-four, these are some that are requiring amendments due to reconciling of those budgets. And those budgets include the Teacher Resource Center, Partners in Ed, Vocational Ed, and Vocational Ed Basic Fund. The Fresh Fruit and Investable Program is a, is an original budget request that we're making for twenty-three, twenty-four, because those budgets began in July of twenty-three. So they are for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Purnell. Any questions, board members? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve items D and E?
I shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved Mrs. Thompson a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next we have the request to approve the resolution declaring the necessity for an intention of money and intention of money, borrow money for certain purposes at an approximate cost of not to exceed fifty-seven million dollars.
Okay. The administration recommends the approval of the submitted resolution to borrow by limited tax notes a maximum principal amount of not to exceed fifty-seven million dollars for the purposes of providing funds for making repairs, alterations, and addition to school buildings of the district, for the purpose of erecting school buildings and other buildings used for school purposes, for the purpose of purchasing heating plants, air conditioning fixtures, and equipment for such, such buildings, including but not limited to the procurement of laptops, tablet computers, and computers for the purpose of equipping school buildings, for the purpose of purchasing land for school purposes, for the purpose of purchasing school buses and transportation equipment, and for the purpose of improving and equipping such lands for school recreational and athletic purposes, and for other authorized purposes provided by Sections thirty-seven, fifty-nine, one oh one, Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two as amended.
Thank you, Mrs. Purnell. Any questions, board members? Just, I have two. The first is, this is effectively, the resolution is the widest use possible. It's written so that everything that is contemplated within the law is available.
Correct, correct. Now, what we are asking, I think the proposed plan from Mr. Burke, from our understanding, and Dr. Green can chime in, is that we are optimizing at least the thirty million planned, scheduled plan at this, at this point in time. And so if the needs are so, if you all approve up to the fifty-seven million, if Dr. Green and the administration decides to go higher depending on our, Mr. Thompson, our financial advisor going forward with that, then we would entertain that at that time.
Right, at this time, we're, we're receiving and contemplating the push from board as to thinking bigger, going bigger. But the current plan at least is to borrow the thirty million. And, and that, again, was arrived, we arrived at that level of borrow in an attempt to maintain the current level of, of impact to our residents here in the city. And the, the plan, evolving plan, but the plan to utilize those dollars is, one, focused on facilities upgrades, especially HVAC repairs and replacements, and that's beyond, of course, the projects that are already contemplated and folded into the, the ESER funding that's already been discussed. Some continued and additional renovations as needed, and it's restrooms, facades, we want to pay some attention to and show some love to our buildings and on the exterior. And that's including lighting and even security systems, and security doors and, and that sort of thing, updating those. As well, to the extent that they're approved, supporting any demolition or raising buildings. We also want to utilize some of the funding to support some of our athletic facilities, and that's additional football field facility. Really trying hard to provide our scholars with a pool, or perhaps an auditorium, but a, but a pool, and would love to place that at the Hardy Building where our sports complex is coming together. Soccer field upgrade, and perhaps some upgrade to the Murrah High School based on softball fields. And to the extent that we don't need the rest of the funding. And to the extent that we don't need the rest of the funding to go to one of those immediately, identifying some emergency or allocating some of the dollars, remaining dollars, about three million for any emergency situations that we have, which those things tend to happen, emergencies, but specifically around facilities. So lots of investment in facilities and especially as we're considering the optimization plan and the promises and hope that scholars will arrive at schools that are better positioned, better situated than the schools that they're leaving. So that's how we would love to utilize these dollars. Should we not build a new school?
All right.
Thank you.
And we did also, I think in the last meeting when we hired our team, there was a question raised about the possibility of using these funds for some redevelopment of our vacant buildings. Attorney, attorney, I may direct that question to you. It seems like there may be a way to do some of that. Is that a right retelling? The may, I didn't say.
Well, creation and innovation become, I think, the bywords. You know, what I was saying last time is that the attorney general opinions are kind of all over the place in terms of what they look at specifically, you can and cannot do. And so I've, number one, decided we should never get attorney general opinions unless we absolutely have to. And then, number two, I think a lot of it comes down to semantics. So, you know, I, I think it would be inappropriate for the board to spend ten million dollars on a building and then turn around and give it to a, you know, a different entity to use solely. You know, that would be using money not for the school district but for another entity. But I think if, if we look at some shared partnerships, collaborations, you know, where maybe the district would retain some use of the building and then maybe look at sharing that or doing some creative arrangements with, say, other entities who could bring in and provide additional services, then, you know, whether it's additional sources of funding, whether it's, you know, some of the, the balance of the fifty-seven million or, you know, wherever it is you find the money, then I think you can kind of get over those issues. You get over the charter school issue. But ultimately, I think to do it, you have to retain some district use.
Yeah.
But I think we can be creative with what that district use is, what it looks like, what we call it, and, you know, how we name those, those arrangements. I mean, I've done what's essentially a lease agreement, but I called it a collaborative, you know, partnership.
It's just the SARS out now.
Yeah, you know, those kinds of things.
Get ready, roll.
So, you know, I, I think we, we can look at it in that way, look at it as partnerships and collaborations when you start looking at some of those vacant facilities and some of those use of funds. Another way, you know, you might, depending on how the funding works, is if the funding technically never comes to JPS, you know, the administration has been really good about getting grant funds and using fiscal agents. And so if some of those funds can be gotten and if the funds necessarily never get placed in a district account, you know, we've got all sorts of arrangements and MOUs with the community foundation, other fiscal agents. So there, there are numerous ways to look at it. And then the other one that Mr. Figures, I think, was mentioning is the legislation that was passed. It's, that's the dueling legislation, which has been around for a while, but y'all might recall, we did some lobbying through Roy Decker to just expand the use. And so that actually allows the district to not only do those community projects, but to maybe make some money off of them through development, you know, because you can retain that passive ownership and operating interest like Lake Highco, but we extended it to be able to use it for residential and housing purposes specifically. So I think it just opens up the range of what you can do and how you can do it using those different sets of legislation.
Thank you, Attorney Turner.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You raised a couple of questions in my head. It just started boop, boop, boop on the cross. But one in particular, you mentioned something about security and, you know, that kind of thing. So my question is, can we get an update and of, of, you know, we've bought some things in schools now, security things?
Yes.
And we, I, I'd like us to have an idea of what that looks like. And then we talked about, you know, the clear book bags, and I want to know what the incidence and the rates, has it changed with the security measures that we have put in place? And maybe an update from our new security.
Emergency manager person?
Mm-hmm, all of that. Because we, you know, we had, those are like some open-ended questions that we just kind of never just kind of finished up. And then I want to hear from our student board. Do we have our student board in place? Because I, I have to hear their voices.
They're coming online. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and all of this, all of those questions kind of hit me, okay, I want to hear from them too. And I want to hear from them regarding all of the stuff we're talking about as far as the buildings as well.
Makes sense. Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that. I, I want to clarify, I knew in the moment I should have said a little more about that. What, what I was specifically referencing is, you know, we, we don't, we don't have security guards at all schools and especially some of our elementaries. But what you see in schools across the country is the creating additional security built into the facility itself. And so cameras and doors that are automatically, you know, open or what have you by the office staff, so they don't have to get up and go to the door every time to let folks in, but to be able to see who's there and, and even creating vestibules where people are kind of not allowed to get into the entire building, but, you know, that sort of thing. And so looking at some facilities enhancements around that provide and create greater security just as some options for us. Yeah. Security doors, alarms on doors that are not in the front so we know if folks are leaving out of the back or propping doors open, that's those sorts of things. Yeah. But appreciate you.
And I mentioned like the metal detector type things, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I've seen some in the high schools, they're kind of really fancy. Now.
Yes. We will, we will get Mr. Young, our Emergency Manager, or Director of Emergency Management on, in queue to come and talk with us. But we've got to bring him back to talk with us about the Emergency Management Plan anyway, but as well, some of these other pieces. On this, can we, can we model out, this may be a question from Mr. Thompson, the tax incidents on a typical household in Jackson of going to fifty-seven million?
So I don't have that right now. But I can say from a general perspective, because you are already levying, levying the three mills currently, then this would be no tax increase. So whatever a homeowner is paying right now, they're going to continue, they're, they're going to continue to pay that same amount provided their home, their property doesn't increase. So this is no tax increase unless the taxable assessed value of that piece of property increases. Because you're currently levying three mills to pay your outstanding limited tax bonds, we're making it such that you do not increase that millage. You're levying the same amount to cover this new entire debt.
So what's the distinction between thirty million and fifty-seven million?
So in that case, you're going out a little bit longer. Right now, when we heard that the district only has about approximately thirty million in projects, we said, oh, we can keep that up to fifteen years. So you'll be able to pay the thirty million off in fifteen years. If the district says, hey, we really and truly want to do fifty-seven million, then we would extend the length of it. The amount is still going to be the same. Your annual payment is still going to be the same. So to put it in real numbers, your three mills that you're levying generate somewhere around three point two, three point three million dollars. We're going to keep your annual payment regardless of the amount that you borrow to three million. So if you say, hey, we only want to do ten or fifteen million, we'll shorten it to approximately seven years or eight years. If you say I want to use fifty-seven million, I think that takes it out to twenty or twenty-five years that I'll have in front of me. So the length of it is, the length of it determines the amount. The shorter amount, excuse me, the lesser the amount, the shorter amount on the term of the debt.
Okay. That's actually really helpful.
And so, and I'm sorry, and then one more thing to piggyback on something that Dr. Green said a little bit earlier, from looking at the projects that the district has discussed, then it looks like we should probably use a shorter term. Unless we talk about building, a new building, then we can put a mortgage, basically think of it, we've been in a mortgage on top of it, so we can finance that out for twenty, twenty-five years. But if we're talking about certain renovations, some HVAC, I don't, I would not recommend for the district to finance HVAC improvements with thirty-year debt. So depending on the projects that the district is looking at, that will determine how long and also the amount as well. And last time I did this and I got chastised for it. Also, out here in the audience with me from the left is Greg McMurray with Cruising Associates that would serve either as underwriter or placement agent, just depending on, again, how we're going to sell the debt. Also, the gentleman next to him is Trey Harrison with Butler Snow. He's the better-looking version of Elizabeth who was up here last time. So again, part of the team that was engaged, he's going to kill me for that a little bit later on.
You're going to get it for that, yeah.
But, but nevertheless, though, that's how we determine how much we're going to borrow.
That's great. That's helpful. The, the Geo bond that we, that the city, the citizens voted on in twenty eighteen, what's, do you remember what the term is on that?
That one was a twenty-year term.
Twenty years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's really helpful.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for the other modeling as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, sir.
Just maybe for just education purposes for myself. The maturity dates, does that have a meaningful impact on placements or costs or expense on anything like that for actually going to market it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The shorter it is, the, the less I have to pay.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to make eye contact with the gentleman over there on the left-hand side, but the less that the district has to pay the underwriter to encourage, because those are quote unquote an easier sell on, on a short piece of paper. Longer we go out, we need to pay a little bit more to entice them.
That's what I figured.
So that's, that's one thing to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. McGuffey has moved. Mr. Figures is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you all for being here, for all your help tonight. Look forward to the plan. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda item finance. All consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda finance?
I shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mrs. Thompson is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item general. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda general?
Shall move.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Ms. Hilliard is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item personnel. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel?
Shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. McGuffey is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Board members, we do have a consideration for an executive session. Is there a motion to close the meeting to consider the need to go into executive session?
Shall move.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Mr. Figures is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for being here and have a good evening.